Go ahead and call this meeting to order.
A special session has been held on Monday, June eighth, two thousand and fifteen, at four o'clock PM in the Fifth Room Conference Room, for a meeting of the Committee of the Whole to discuss Capital Maintenance Improvement Plan and Community Development Block Grant. Roll call. Philbrook.
Here.
Bynum.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Townsend. McKeonan.
Here.
Muggia.
Here.
Johnson. Kane.
Here.
Markley.
Here.
Walters. Holland.
Here. All right, we are here for the CMIP Capital Maintenance Improvement Program Committee of the Whole, and it means it's budget season. So we are officially underway. I'm going to turn it over to Doug Bach to walk us through the program tonight.
All right, well, tonight really is just a follow-up from last week. I think we stepped through many of the things in the projects. Reggie has some copies, if anybody did not bring back a copy from last week or their notes from what they had. So if you need anything, wave your hand and he'll give you that. Otherwise, we'll just sit with that. Also, we have one document, there was a question that was asked. Mr. Heatherman has that, he has built that for a response to you. I'll have him quickly address that after he gets back to his seat. So the intention of this portion of that is to really get back if commissioners have anything specifically they want to talk to or ask questions about after having a chance to look at our proposed project list, or talk about any projects they want to get, I guess that aren't addressed in the way they want to have them addressed. This would be the opportunity for that input to come in and fill in. So as Bill makes his way back around, Bill, do you just want to quickly touch base with the memorandum that you put together?
Yes, Doug, this was in response to Commissioner Muggia's suggestion that we explain what some of the annual maintenance projects cover, and we just tried to give a brief explanation. If anyone has questions, we can talk about that as part of the budget.
I think it was a good question, particularly for the new commissioners, to kind of get a little explanation on some of those items that we don't typically, you know, we don't spend as much time on, and how we divide them out. So Mayor, I don't have any formal presentation from that. We were coming back for this portion to discuss where we were last week. So will stand for questions or however you'd like to move us from here.
All right, did you, you've already walked through this presentation last week, is that right? Walked through item by item. So are there particular items of question or concern in here that people want to see? I would, I would just ask Mr. Bach just for clarification. Large numbers, last year's CMIP total project numbers, and what you're anticipating for this year, if you have a ballpark that you're working under. If you can give us those, or point us to those numbers, I think those are helpful to state out front, and where you see the increase or decrease.
Debbie, and we have a slide for that, didn't we, from last week, where we kind of showed where our target numbers were? On the debt finance projects, generally, it's if you look at page three, under the debt. So one of those, you got one is cash by fund, the other is debt finance projects. So if you go under debt finance projects, page three, and you see the variation, the numbers between fifteen and sixteen, we're working at that around thirteen and a half to fourteen million dollar range. You see this number is at twelve point seven in twenty fifteen, fourteen point four. We had a little modification between the two, and previous years we're showing in that fourteen range. So it's not like we really dipped off, we just have to kind of balance it back out. So that's the range we're trying to stay in on debt. I think we showed the one slide where we showed our debt rolling each year, that our debt still calls for us to put another half million dollars to the mill rate or to that fund. So I'll have to move that mill rate a half mil, and that means I'm transferring money from other areas in order to finance that in twenty six going forward, because it requires additional. And in our current track, even by lowering the amount of our debt each year, we still have so much coming online that you can see it start to go upward. Debbie pointed out last week, a lot of times there's opportunities for us to refinance, and we try to level that out. And also, hopefully, you just see the mil become worth a little bit more each year as it goes in and pays into this program. But at our current rate and trying to keep it down, it still tends us to put more money into our debt financing every year. Debbie, do you want to add to that?
I would just say, that's why we tried to hold that thirteen to fifteen million dollar level on new projects. The subtotal that Doug was referring to, a lot of times we look at the two years that we're budgeting together, because sometimes the way the projects work out, you can't always get that exact amount in one year, something may get delayed. So we, we try to balance that thirteen to fifteen million out over the two years. And that's, I think fifteen and sixteen, sixteen average out to about fourteen million, or a little, little under fourteen million per year.
A key point we'll note, we talked a little bit about standing committee, you know, and the opportunity for that in the fall. As you see these out years, they're too high. And I know that's something Mr. Heatherman and Mr. Tobin are working on. I think that's coming back with the standing committee in Public Works and talking through ways we can reprioritize where we want to be. It kind of falls the same way with cash. If you look under City General Funds, a good example of that. I'm hoping, and that's on page two, under the cash, you know, immediately we move into twenty seventeen and out, where we're up there and we, we double up on already what's a little high right now in twenty sixteen. I'm probably going to have to get that down to get our, our cash flow in place where we want it to be. But you see, it goes from nine hundred thirty-three thousand to one point seven million. We get better fiscally as we get out, but we can't just double up in every area as we go along. And we hit cash projects probably harder than anything else. So it's an area where I hope to see us rebound more in that area. It's not like we're going, you know, because we really did drop cash way down. No, it's not. But that's an area where we did see a big impact from previous years when we started to deplete the amount of cash funded there. Reggie just pulled it up, you see them blue in two thousand and seven. Is that CMIP cap, well, okay, that includes equipment. But you can see we were upwards of twenty and around twenty million, and then we got down to ten. This is not a correlating number, I've got to see, where's that number correlate to on this cash sheet, Reggie?
But pre-recession, we're still half, what we're doing pre-recession.
Yeah, you're at ten million, we were up over twenty million dollars in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, and those are cash projects. So nowhere else did we slice our budget in half, you know, as we went along. So it's an area we'll see, we will try to work to rebound in. Mayor, does that answer your question?
I will, I will ask for clarification again. On page three, when we're looking at debt finance subtotal city debt projects of twenty sixteen shows fourteen four, fourteen million four hundred thousand dollars. That is about, I'm thinking about a million and a half worth of cash to fund that level of debt, is that right? We're adding a million and a half of debt service payment to fund the fourteen million dollars worth of projects. Lou, I think slipping, he used to do that in his head. I caught him by surprise.
It's a little over a million.
Just a little over a million dollars.
But the sixteen projects, we're not going to have to look, we'll prove them, and they're shown here as debt. So they wouldn't get bonded until it's completed early as twenty seven.
It's that cycle, I think some of you start to get used to it, and you see it's, our debt responds slower if we move to it, high or low, because a lot of times we'll issue notes, we don't turn it into a bond until we've completed that project. So something we say twenty sixteen, that's what we budgeted for, we'll start the project, we may not finish it till twenty eighteen, and then that means it falls into the twenty nineteen bond cycle. So this there, twenty sixteen project, it goes into a bond in nineteen. So it's very easy to get out several years. So if we said, well, let's drop all our debt stuff, and we're going to only do a million dollars this year, it has no impact on our immediate debt service. What's out there on that other chart about debt service, that's already in play. We know these things are coming online each year as they come out, because we've already created so much debt from previous activities. Just like these will have the impact three, four years from now.
So can you go back to that slide, please, the debt service slide? So what's important, I think, for us to keep in mind is when we look at the total city bond and interest fund expenditures, you have GO, TIF, other funds, you have your total line at the top. For twenty fifteen, it's twenty-seven million. Twenty sixteen, we're projecting twenty-seven, six ninety-seven, right, for payment. I think it's, it's important for us to remember, and perhaps everyone knows this, but I think it's important to remember, that when we look down on here and see fourteen million dollars worth of debt-funded projects, we're not adding fourteen million dollars up there, we're adding about a million up there, because it's going to be paid out over time. Does that make sense? Because you look at, it's a little, when you look at the fourteen million in twenty sixteen, you're not adding fourteen million to twenty-seven million, because it looks like we're going half again. You're only adding a million dollars of debt service to this, but you're averaging fourteen million dollars worth of liability over the life of those projects, which are going to show up in another color on the bottom graph over time.
Yeah, and I believe what Debbie's done on that top line in the purple is where she's tried to project new debt.
Right, I've estimated for seventeen through, through, probably seventeen through nineteen, I've estimated, or sixteen through nineteen, I've estimated future debt service into those totals.
Do we have, do we have a slide? Don't, don't create this, it's not necessary, I was just curious. Do you have a slide that shows what's happened with our debt over the last decade or two? I was just curious. You don't even, I mean, if no one else's interest, you could just send it to me.
That's the last decade.
This, this slide, coming back from two thousand and eleven and go back?
Is that, no, I mean, just the debt, is this just the debt?
This is just debt.
Just the debt.
So we have previous iterations of this slide that would go back to whenever, I don't know what you guys have on file, but.
Has there been anything, I mean, were there years in the last decade that were significant? Did you see?
You know, I'm not sure, I can't remember when the first time we put this graph together. I don't remember it. The twenty million dollar target, that, the top line there is kind of what we've, we've been targeting, and I think we've pretty much stayed. Sometimes we've hit that line, but we've usually, we're usually staying right around that twenty million or a little below.
Okay.
But this shows it's going to be a lot of covered.
Not a lot.
Right, it's, based on my future projections, it's, we do see, starting in twenty seventeen, it goes up. But as I said, there, there could be some opportunities such as refundings that would possibly lower that, lower that debt service in the future year.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's probably projecting this out to show when we start to see some of the stuff that's been refunded or just how it's originally issued fall off.
Yeah, and this is projections, this isn't past. I mean, it goes backwards a little bit to eleven, but I was just curious if there's been, Doug, can you recall anything significant in the past that affected our debt?
I would say, when we, if we went back and took the chart from oh five to present, you would see during the recession, our debt level went up as we shifted a lot of cash payments during the recession to debt service. I think that's, that would be accurate. But in terms of the bump, we've, that twenty million dollar line, we still worked very hard to stay around and to get back down below. So I would say that's a, I, I know there was a spike during the recession, but you can see we've worked hard to keep it. What we did is we just stopped issuing debt on new projects for a lot of stuff.
What we really need to strive for is keeping this in this area, and like I said, putting more back into cash. I mean, if we added ten million dollars a year in cash-funded projects back where we were in seven or eight, that's a, that's a major impact. I think Mr. Heatherman would be very happy to hear something like that come back into play. You know, because then, then we're able to make a difference in the community immediately, and we're not doing anything to increase our debt service.
Why, why would Bill care if it's cash or debt?
No, I just meant in fact, if he got ten million dollars more worth of projects to be able to do work with.
Okay, I just want to make sure I wasn't missing something, that we got to do more with cash for some reason.
But I'm sure because of the wellbeing of our community.
I'm sure Bill is concerned, thank you. Yes, absolutely. Just get him some money.
I think the other issue is certain types of projects are more appropriate for cash.
And I think Bill discussed this last week, certain types of projects are more appropriate for cash as opposed to debt. When we do a major reconstruction of a, of a street, that, that, to me, that's, that's more appropriate for debt. But if we're doing maintenance or more of an annual type of expenditure, then that's a project that we want to strive to do on a cash basis.
Well, and I would say an example would be police cars. Police cars are virtually disposable. They run a hundred thousand, a hundred and twenty thousand miles a year, they run them for three years, and there's not much left at the end of that. And during pre-recession, we were buying police cars with cash. We went to some debt purchasing during the recession, because we had to get some new cars, and we're trying to get that back on the cash cycle. I don't think buying three-year vehicles on debt is smart generally. Now, a fire truck, on the other hand, which might be a quint, is over a million dollars. It has a ten-year life expectancy. Debt financing a piece of fire equipment is more justifiable. So it's just a matter, it's not dissimilar to our, to our house budgets. If you're buying a new house, that's a good opportunity for debt financing. Depending on what kind of car you're buying, you're probably better off buying something you can pay with cash, rather than something, rather than long-term debt financing on that. So the other question I want, other thing I want to point out on this slide, other funds. So twenty sixteen has six point two million dollars in other funds. I presume those are other funds, like the sewer fund?
That's correct, those are all the enterprise fund debt.
The enterprise fund, so that enterprise fund debt, which makes up about less, a little less than a quarter of our overall debt, about thirty, I'm not doing that percentage in my head very well. Six of the twenty-seven million is enterprise fund debt that is serviced with other revenue streams outside of our general fund budget.
That's correct.
Yeah. And, but the overall, and that debt is not listed in our chart, is that right?
Right, that, the chart only, the chart at the bottom refers only to the highlighted line at the top. That's GO debt specifically, the, the other funds are not included in the chart.
Now, the TIF debt, the one point nine million dollars of TIF debt in twenty sixteen, how much of that is performing TIF debt, how much of that is underwater TIF debt? You know what I'm saying? Our TIFs generally, the vast majority of our TIFs are self-funded, the commercial TIFs have been very successful. There are only a couple of residential TIFs pre-recession that did not perform. But in terms of coverage on that debt, the one point nine, are our TIFs currently covering themselves?
I believe on, on those TIFs, the only one that I can think that stands out is probably the Midtown TIF.
Right, because it's not moving.
Right.
Yeah, we're still carrying the Midtown TIF, but the rest of them are covering their own debt.
I mean, some of the residential ones by comparison are pretty small. They may be under, but we're talking fifty thousand differences versus the other ones are million dollar type. Well, and you see the number up there.
Now, in the past, we have gone through these pretty carefully, line by line. You did, we did some of that last week. Is there an interest in the commissioners? Have you, did you highlight particular projects that you'd like to see moved from year to year? That you'd like to see accelerated or pushed back? Are there particular projects? I mean, I think this is our opportunity, we're all aware of items going on in the city. Are there things that we, because this is the time when we prioritize those. And so I just want to make sure that, there's two parts to this. One is our administrator saying, I think we have about this much of a bucket to dip into this year. That's the big picture. And the staff obviously knows between Tobin and Heatherman what's breaking fastest, and what needs to be, what's the furthest behind. I don't think we're, we're probably behind in all of our maintenance, so what's the most essential? The question is, do we know of things in our areas that are essential that aren't moving fast enough, or you have a question about? I think that's the check and balance we provide during these sessions. Commissioner Markley?
I was just, I was just going to beat Mike Kane to the punch, and, and so we've talked a lot about this fire study, and I'm curious, when is that fire study going to be done? And are we going to address it, are we going to do our planning before we're back here again next budget year? Or are we going to have to sit around this table in July and try to figure out whether something should be on this list or not? I'm hoping we're not going to have to do that.
I can share my view of that, but.
Yeah, the, the fire projects are unfunded at this point. And really what, we know there's going to be a need to fund a certain level. And I guess that's one thing. This project, this sheet doesn't show us having any debt service that's allocated to it, to future of ones we have. So the commitment could be, I mean, we, we can prioritize them later, we wouldn't want to prioritize them until, and that, until we have all our stuff back from our study.
Yeah, and I guess that's what I'm saying, is we've sort of said, we're pushing this off. We don't want to really talk about it and get into the weeds till we get that study back. So when is that, that we get the study back, and when can we start to look at those weeds?
Joe? It's going to be late July, August, probably before we have all that information.
Yeah, the consultants have one more in-town visit scheduled in July to finish up kind of their on-the-ground type work. Just up until here recently, they've, they've asked us for additional data to include in their analysis, so they're still doing their part of it. So I would anticipate, you know, sometime in July, they haven't given me a hard date yet, and I haven't asked for one, quite frankly. I can certainly do that and try to get you an answer back on a hard date. But they, they're asking us for information, we're going back and forth, so I see that as a positive for the study. And again, they've got one more visit to make so they can meet their other requirements, so.
The other piece that's not listed on here, this is not equipment, this is just projects, right? Each one of these stations needs a new truck, all, almost all of our trucks are completely out of cycle. So you can take the thirty-two million and add another twenty million to the side of it for fire trucks. Well, not, not a full twenty million, because they're about, pumpers are only six hundred thousand each. So they're a bargain. So, but you were still looking at probably at least ten million dollars in immediate equipment needs on the fire side that you can add to that number. It's, it's, probably need another forty-two million, just to look at the process. Are you still on fire, are you on fire or are you on another topic?
I'm going, another topic.
Okay, Kane?
Well, I think those guys have got an opinion on what fire stations might want to be replaced. You know, the pole barn at one hundred and twenty-third and Leavenworth Road. And I think we should put the funding in there now, because we know it's a mess. And I agree with the mayor, that our equipment, not just in the fire department, but the police department. I mean, I'm walking today, and a, and a police officer drove by, and I had to look back to make sure, because of the lights, not because of the color, because it was all faded. And I know I laugh about it, but it's serious. I mean, you want to, you want to, they want to see you, the people want to see a, a, a police car in colors, instead of trying to guess if it's one. So I think we need to, to put something on there that says we have to have a fire station out west, and that not just fire equipment, but police cars as well.
Yeah, and I'm, I've toured, I think I'm over half the fire stations that I've been touring. I'm scheduling the other half. And I have been to two or three that I thought didn't need to be torn down. The rest of them are in pretty rough shape. I will say, we have some buildings that are not in good shape, housing some fire equipment. So the need is high, and I will say, we're on track, we've built one new police station. We're on track to build a second one. We, downtown is in pretty good shape, that leaves one fire, and the remaining fire station actually, or police station is not in bad shape. But when we look at the, the fire places, my only concern about putting one in now is I want to make sure that when we get this study. But when we look at the fire places, my only concern about putting one in now is I want to make sure that when we get this study, and I think we spend all year, Commissioner Markley, to your point, I think we spend all year evaluating that, not just budget time, really digging into it. Because if the study is worth anything, it's gonna take us that much time to digest it. I want to make sure, there may be some unpopular decisions to be made, there may be some stations that are recommended to close and to move elsewhere. And I want all those recommendations to come from the study and not from us. I think that's gonna be a, I think that'll be a stronger recommendation, frankly, so. But I think the pole barn at Hundred and Twenty-third is a strong candidate for a new station. Should there be deemed a need to have a station, and certainly, I don't know how you don't, because it's out there on an island all by itself. So I think it's a strong candidate. All right, anything else on the fire piece? Commissioner Walker?
I've advanced the special needs park concept. I've spoken to most of the commissioners at one time or another. I need some funding to get started. I wish the Parks Director were here tonight, that he could speak headwink. Maybe Mr. Tobin can speak to the issue. We need to have money in that for the initial planning and it's not a study per se, because the need is there. It is so that the grants that are available, and there are, I am informed, a multitude of grants that are available, can be applied for, but not from ground zero. The Advisory Committee on Disabilities has been working on this. At some point, the Park Board will be involved, I assume, although I think Mr. Rogers, is that his last name? It is, isn't it?
Yes.
I thought for a minute, Mr. Rogers has identified what he thinks is the best location for that, which is Wind Up Park, down from the Legends. It has the space and the pre-existing parking and the necessary improvements to diminish the cost. So I'm pushing for that in this budget. I look at the parks and recreation aspect of this, and I really don't see anything that has anything to do with, you know, healthy living in the parks program for capital investment, spillway repair, all these things I'm sure are needed. Two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for Marina Service docks. And I know I have some very good friends that would like to see the docks larger than they are, with more boats, with slips. But I also think that the special needs children of our community and probably kids from other communities nearby need the kind of park I'm talking about and not a piece or two of equipment, which is what we now have at a couple of parks. So I'm asking the staff to take a look at that and see how that could be advanced. I don't pretend to know what that number would be. I suppose I would throw out the number a hundred thousand, just to kind of shake it up. Whether that's a good number or a bad number, I'm gonna defer to, well, Mike, I guess.
If I might, Commissioner, and not to put words in Jeremy's mouth, but in conversations that we've had, he's indicated that thirty to forty thousand dollars would be a sufficient amount of money to get the study started for this project. He has put one of these in before, he did it at his prior workplace in Independence.
And I have been out there, I would invite all of you, if you're an independent, to look at this park and then you have a visual, I thought we'd get photographs of it, but. And it's joint, I mean, there are equipment for non-special needs children that, you know, so if you've got sisters, brothers, whatever it might be, they don't have to use the handicap equipment, I guess that would be the way to put it. But it draws people from all over because they are not plentiful in the metropolitan area. And it's probably a three-year build-out, I would guess, depending on how grants go and looking at what money we have. If we don't get started, we'll never do it.
Mike, just to clarify, because I know we talked about some of this, who went through it? It's, we would come into it and we'd spend thirty to forty thousand dollars in engineering-type studying, planning for the park?
Yes.
With an ultimate budget that's about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to build the actual park or the playground equipment?
That's correct. It would be in the neighborhood of four hundred thousand dollars. One of the requirements for a park of this type is a lot of space. They need a lot of room to set up all the things, to have the handicap accessible rides, et cetera, et cetera. And we have space at different locations, but I think part of the study also would help to determine what would be the best location and the most economical place to put it. Jeremy has indicated to me that these are destination parks. People will come from the whole metro area and outside the metro area to come in and use this park because there's not many of them around.
And certainly, I thought that Wind Up Park would be good because it makes the connection with the Legends and the amenities, the restaurants and so forth that out-of-town people, to the extent that they come, might, you know, stop for lunch or dinner as part of their experience. But, and I'm relying on staff to make sure that the Park Board, I don't know if they've been able to hold a meeting the last couple of months, do you, Mike?
I understand that they were not, but I know that Jeremy certainly would be more than capable of making that presentation.
Well, I would certainly want them to be informed before we got any further down the road. I know the Handicap Advisory Board, or Disabilities Advisory Board, is quite excited about this idea. And has circled the wagon, so to speak, on getting this done. So I'd like staff to see if it's possible for us to find forty thousand dollars, I guess, if that's the number. Whatever the number is, that's right, okay?
So I just have a question, a follow-up question that, are you saying, Mike, you need forty thousand dollars of Unified Government money? Or you need a dollar amount to leverage grants that are out there and available?
No, that would be our money to get this thing started. At some point, I don't know that the whole four hundred thousand dollars would be our cost. I think that we would have a part of that as the leverage were. He's told me that he thought that was the cost of the whole park, not just our share.
But I think what Hal was saying is the thirty or forty thousand dollars, that goes towards the planning study? And is that a hundred percent funded by us?
Yes, it, as I know it right now, Jeremy might know more about that. But I would think that we would want to get that done so that we would be able to apply for the grants and say, here's our plan, and we want you to help us fund it.
Because just for clarity, there are a ton of recreational planning grants available that some do require a match, but that's a big difference. There's a big difference between twenty thousand and forty thousand dollars. So there's money in planning.
Certainly that would be pursued.
Okay.
Well, I guess the point tonight is, is that in looking at all these important projects that we have, that are, some of which we're not gonna get to, I'm making an emphasized point, that staff get this project in here and figure out what it is to get this thing started and then let the commission decide whether we're gonna do it. I'm very clear where I am on this, but, you know, I don't see where forty thousand plus or minus is gonna kill it. And, you know, if we have more money to put into it, then we've got money to go to grants and say, we've got money to leverage. So I just don't want it lost in the, I mean, this is overwhelming. And this doesn't even include the police, the fire, the firehouses, equipment. I mean, it's overwhelming.
Yeah, I, I know.
So Hal, I know where you're coming from on this, because if you don't get it on the radar, it falls, it falls to the side. And so to emphasize this now so we can get it done eventually, thank you, I appreciate that. I have friends on the Park Board and are involved in Park for a long time, and they've helped with some of that too, with raising money for some of the ADA stuff that we have already. So I want to applaud you for mentioning that, and I'm still gonna keep pinging on everybody to remember that we need support in the animal control arena too. Because we can't follow through on what our folks have asked for. If we don't put some money forth and/or, I don't know, whatever we have to do, song and dance, I don't know. Hey, now, there's a thought, we could, we could put on a show. We could roast somebody, you guys can roast me, I don't care if you think it'd make money.
I will note that on page two under debt.
Hundred thousand, yeah, hundred thousand several times in a row, yeah.
Now, I do have, that is a project that's under the Police Department, I know the Special Committee's doing some stuff, but Chief Sigler is supposed to be working on what all that goes for as far as a priority and how we're going to do it. It's been expansion of animal control facility at this point. I think that still denotes that we would come back to committee and note exactly how we would be planning to do that as we come in a future year.
And going along with that, would it help when we get the new director on board with figuring out what we need to do in animal control?
Yes, I believe them coming in with some expert advice, you know, in the area they're in, they will be helping us in that area immensely.
I'm looking forward to that.
Commissioner Bynum?
Page three, debt financed projects. If I could just have a brief explanation under that first category of benefit districts. The column marked priority, is that the priority order as determined by the commission? Under debt financed?
I believe that priority is one submitted by staff.
Staff priority. And so when you see West Height, and you'd have to just explain what all the West Height project encompasses. You moved the four hundred thousand out of fifteen to seventeen, does that change its priority?
Yeah, I'll let Bill speak to this. I don't think we rearranged the priority, their previous priorities. We went back and moved them based on which projects were ready to go versus ones that were not.
So maybe an explanation of, it looks like number four is a to-be decided, but if you could help me with what numbers one, two, and three are.
Yeah, the priority originally, and as the way it's been presented in the last couple of years, was simply in order of request. When we reinstated funding for the benefit district program, we went by order of petition. And this year, based on readiness to proceed, we simply elevated TA Edison Friendship Heights above because that particular neighborhood, it's a more straightforward project and there was more readiness to proceed. The West Height, you see there, it's listed estimated two point two million, that's a very out-of-date estimate. This is gonna have to be broken into phases, it's gonna have to be taken in bits and pieces. And in order to show progress on benefit districts as a whole, we wanted to spend twenty sixteen getting one out the door that was more straightforward. So probably should have simply reordered those priority numbers to reflect the reason for bringing that one forward.
And so what is the TA Edison project?
That would, that is, TA Edison is the name of the school that's located in that neighborhood. It's at about Tenth and Locust, am I correct? No, yep, Tenth and Locust, just north of County Line Road. And in fact, we also have a Safe Routes to School project proposed in that general vicinity a couple of years later. So there's kind of a critical mass that we could achieve in that particular location if we do some early work with a benefit district. And that was a pretty active petitioning process that was more recent, so it's fresher.
And then what's the West Height project and what's the West Vale project?
The West Height project, as indicated, you know, was generally described as curb and sidewalk in the West Height area, but that's an awful big area, so it requires more vetting to figure out exactly which blocks and what order to proceed in. The West Vale was also a similar request for curb replacement, and that's also an older petition that we've had on file. The thing about benefit districts is you really have to go back and make sure that folks are in fact willing to sign the final petition and commit their own special assessment to be levied against them, or at least reach the fifty-one percent majority level. And you get a lot of hesitation once you come back around. So that's why we wanted to work in a neighborhood that had already freshly petitioned and understood that they would have to carry through and make the formal final.
And I think that's a big piece about the benefit districts, is the neighborhood votes to self-tax to improve the infrastructure around their homes. And we have tried at the Unified Government to look at that as a grant match because our highest priority for funding tends to be, if we have a match on a grant, if there's a federal road project and we need to match something, we don't want to lose that federal money. And a benefit district is the same way. If a neighborhood has committed half the money, or fifty-one percent of the money, we want to make sure that we jump all over that and fund the other half. So we have a priority, the commission historically has stated as a priority that those benefit districts are, need to move up the ladder to make sure they get funded when the citizens are ready to fund them.
Hasn't this West Vale project been around for, I mean, for a long time? Seems like it's been around off and on since I became chief legal counsel in nineteen eighty-six.
You're correct, Commissioner, that project.
Doesn't the dynamics over there change with everybody? It's like fifty-one to forty-nine, and somebody moves in, they're hustling around to get petitions.
They've been in at least four times that I can remember. All four times, it's failed at the last step.
What's that latest one, Mike?
I'm sorry?
On that latest one, is that where they're, where they've redrawn the roads so you don't take off and go at an angle to, through, to Park, down Park Drive?
The changes they made to prevent it from being a cut through.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, that was an early form of traffic calming that was implemented because they were, they were driving through that neighborhood at a real high rate of speed and coming off the high school and veering down and slamming onto Orville, which is a busy street right there to get down to City Park and the highway.
Well, the reason I'm asking this because occasionally I go to a, to a meeting down, they have in that area, an area meeting, and it seems like there's been a revival of that recently within the last several months, that's why I was asking. A newer, a newer thing, so I'll talk to you later.
Just to ask another question then, so a project can make the list before they've hit their fifty-one percent?
Well, typically what happens is if a neighborhood expresses interest, we start tracking it on this five-year out. But if they don't make it, we push it, right? But what we want to do is get the money online, so when they do meet the threshold, we don't have to scramble to find the money. So when they express interest, when West Height expresses interest, we go ahead and put a whole, essentially a placeholder out in the out-years. You know, it'll take them two years to get this together. So we put a placeholder out two years, and then if they progress on schedule, we're ready to fund it. But if it gets delayed for whatever reason, and there's a hundred reasons why these get delayed, then we just push it. And if they pull it off and say, ah, never mind, we don't want to do it, but West Vale has never said we don't want to do it, they just come back and try it again. So we just keep pushing this money down the road. But what we don't want to happen is West Vale come forward with the fifty-one percent, they're ready to pull the trigger, and we are like, oh, well, we didn't have a placeholder for you. So never mind. So we're, it's our planning, knowing that if the neighborhood can't pull off their percentage, we push it. And we always tend to have other projects to fund instead, so.
And just the last question, for the West Height project, this is separate from their traffic calming project that they did many years ago and did get the required percentages for? This is a separate project, or maybe a continuation of that?
Yeah, it's a different, I mean, it probably is a continuation in a form, but it's a different project from what they came in and funded. different project from what they came in and funded. Anything else on that, Bill? Yeah, they did that one. That was benefit district established, done, and then we moved on to this.
Okay.
It's the sound of $600,000 going down the street.
Does that include both of those, just one?
No, that's one and then the salaries on top. It's expensive, more.
I thought two things going.
All right. Anything else? Anybody else, line items that you're interested in?
I just have questions. I'm not, don't need anything to change. Again, I'll say, I think staff has done a great job. This is very readable, fantastic, so much easier. Part of it's I've been here a while now, but the other part is this is a lot better than the way it has been. So you guys did a good job. But Bill, I have a question for you. Safe Routes to School in here, you have 500,000 booked for 2015. I'm just, just help me here. We're in 2015. Are you saying that half million's going to be spent this year?
For which one?
It's page, what page is it?
Six?
Six, yeah, page six. And it is the, you see what I'm talking about?
So on page one of debt, in the lower grouping, rehabilitation and reconstruction projects, the one with priority number 11 is called Safe Routes D, which is Frank Rushton, Midland Trail, and Hazel Grove.
Right.
That project, which is federally funded, so it's being administered by KDOT, we're working on the plans right now, will be bid in either this, I think the October KDOT bid letting, which means we have to have the money booked this year so that we can pay KDOT this year upfront our share. In all reality, the construction is most likely not to be until the spring of next year, just by virtue of the timing of the bid.
Okay, so help me here. On page six, just so I can read this a little bit better, it says $500,000, and it specifically earmarked to those three schools. And then you go to your page, and it has those three schools, and it says 250,000.
It's a $770,000 project. 500,000 is grant funded. Page six is grant funded.
It's all of that, together?
Yes. Page one is the local funds necessary, and page six is the federal grant. And the two together comprise the budget for the Safe Routes D program.
So that's a total of 750,000?
$770,000.
770,000. And just for clarity again, this year, this year, you're doing, KDOT is doing the planning?
That's right. We're doing the plans.
And the construction will take place in the spring?
Yes.
And KDOT's doing that planning, and you're just paying the bill?
The way all of the KDOT federal aid projects work is we're responsible for having a set of plans prepared, getting the right-of-way purchased, and taking care of all the utility relocations. We have to meet KDOT standards, but we hire the engineer and we're in the lead on getting that through the approvals process. Then they take that set of plans, and they let the contract, and they act as the construction contract holder, which is good for us, because that means all of the many, many, many federal rules and regulations around construction contracting, they get to do the paperwork on. And then they are basically acting as our agent to do the construction. And we never actually touch the federal aid money that's shown. We write them a check for our share, and they put it into the project accounting, and they administer the construction with that combination of local and federal funds.
Okay. And not for the purposes of this committee, but when you get finished with the drawings of what that project will entail, can you send that to me?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
I will point out one thing on the Safe Routes. We, this is our first time trying to do three schools at once, and we did this because there are so many quirky things about Safe Routes that you don't want to get tied into not being able to kind of get a blend. And these particular three schools, once we went to those meetings, the need was so enormous, and we can anticipate the same kind of reaction when we get to Safe Routes E, that you will notice in an out year, we added another $300,000, because in order to simply meet the bare bones requirements of these six schools, we would anticipate needing to go beyond what the federal grant could cover, including some of the immediate needs that came out in this particular round of projects. So we would anticipate a side project that would be locally let, that would allow us to kind of finish the most critical blocks that would otherwise go undone with the federal aid grant. And that was a proposal we're making as part of this budget cycle.
So I guess I do have a question now. So Mayor, to what you were saying, and I completely am on the same page with you about what we've talked about in the way of when we have a grant opportunity and we get that, that it moves up on the list, becomes a priority for us. I get that thinking, and I like that. So my question is, when you're looking at, and I'll just use this as an example, when you're looking at doing Safe Routes, for example, let's say TA Edison. And TA Edison is on for benefit districts and has been on for several years, and you're looking at some match money for that. From an engineering perspective, with that big of a project, wouldn't we want to try to do that at the same time, or is that not necessary?
So there's really two considerations. One is, yes, it's great if you can compile all your construction together for some reasons. But when you're dealing with federal funds, they are so rigid in terms of authorities and how items can be handled, that sometimes it's better not to presume too much connection, but to kind of find clean breakpoints between the projects, so that if a hiccup occurs on one project, it doesn't put the other one in peril. So some kinds of money are easy to mix, and other kinds of money are very difficult to mix. And KDOT federal aid grants are very difficult to combine with any other type of project delivery that has any uncertainty or risk whatsoever. But what we do in those cases is we try to picture which one could come first and settle kind of half the issues, and then kind of have the, you know, a clean pickup point for the second project to come in. In fact, even two federal aid grants themselves are hard to match. And I'm looking at Commissioner Philbrook. You know, we're doing separate work on Leavenworth Road that is distinctly separated by time, because you just can't mix some of these projects together. But the communities are still able to see step by step, you know, in their mind, it's a phase one, phase two, phase three type of approach.
No, I'm talking about, though, is it difficult to mix our money with the federal grant money? Because a benefit district, in essence, is our money. It's property tax that's collected.
It would be.
Okay, that's fine.
The legalities with the benefit district would create so many other complications that it wouldn't be worth it to try to mix that with a federal aid project. And the federal aid projects, in all honesty, you're paying a little extra compared to what we would pay if we just bidded ourselves. All of the federal reporting rules and stuff do cause the overheads on those projects to go up.
Okay, thank you very much. And I want to say something. I just had an epiphany on something. Sorry, I've been here a long time, and maybe you already thought of this. But given that we don't have a lot of money to spend on projects, it requires so much of our staff to manage smaller projects over time, and to really be aware of other dollars that they can leverage with current projects, where, for example, in more affluent counties, they're probably able to do bigger projects all at one time, which doesn't require as much manpower. So, Bill, if no one else understood that, I think you did. And so I greatly appreciate, even more so now, our staff and their ability to manage so many projects with so little dollars. It really ends up being, in the end, a lot more work for our people than it would be in a different county.
Thank you. Philbrook?
Yes, I know that with the involvement on State Avenue, that dealing with the CID, the district with Red Development right there at 78th and State, and doing the Tiger Grant work, it got a little interesting along there. Bill's going, "Yes." And so what I would ask of you, a question. Is there, would it behoove us to see about some CIDs kind of waiting in the wings on some different areas to fill in the gap after we get the federal grant money used, sir?
I will say, I don't know too much about the mechanics of some of those special vehicles like CIDs, but if you find me the money, I'm more than happy to spend it.
Somebody else address that, please. Do you want to address the CIDs issue?
No, go ahead. Well, it'd probably be on a case-by-case basis. I mean, if we come into an area and we determine that there's a potential district that we could overlay that's truly going to benefit, you know, like you say, on the sidewalks, coming up and down, those businesses may be willing to do it. I mean, of course, you can do a CID from the basis of a sales tax or a property tax. I don't think in the areas we're talking about, you see a lot of sales tax potential.
Right. No, but I'm just asking a general question, because there is a lot of work we're doing all over the city, and there are areas that do have businesses and may need some work done that come in. That's my answer.
Yeah, so that would be a potential. We would have, I mean, to go out and get those businesses. If we wanted to take that initiative, you know, then we need to get over half the businesses or property owners within the area to say, "Hey, we want you to go ahead and spend this money." You know, in a sense, you use a CID similar to a benefit district in that regard, in how it come out.
Commissioner, I will say that right now, it does generate, that interest does generate up from projects, and I think we've been able to seize on those opportunities to help take the lead on carrying out construction that makes a lot of sense. For example, the work we're doing right now at 24th and Metropolitan was really our kind of agreeing to take on, as our project, some work that is being, basically leveraging some of the development financing that was made available. And, you know, the work on 98th Street is similar in that we're able to execute public infrastructure based on a concept of how to support that through those types of means.
Thank you.
Commissioner Walker?
In looking at page six, I see that there's been added a $2.3 million new line item for Cricket Wireless.
Let me speak to all these, Commissioner. These items are all listed as economic development projects. They require funding sources. They each have, you know, I guess I'll say, we've listed them because they've been out as projects that they'll come before you, talk about how they want to do something. Wyandotte County Fair Improvements doesn't have a funding source. The South Patrol, actually, that does, Debbie. We already issued a note for that, didn't we?
Yes, we issued that this year.
So we should take that, requires funding, that's a revenue source, probably a carryover. 98th Street Realignment near France Family Drive, that's funded by the Star Bonds out in that area. Quicker Wireless is another one that's being proposed, but it does not have a funding source, so it would have to come back before you with the whole program to show how it could offset.
At some point, I am requesting that you, in consultation with the mayor, as part of a special session, give us an overview of our relationship with Cricket Wireless and Memorial Hall. I am astounded that Memorial Hall sits there vacant constantly. And I'm aware that there are probably issues with promoters and other venues, but I can certainly remember the day when we had no trouble with our two staff employees and a guy in the business getting frontline concerts. A lot of big, went on to be big names. What's going on with Cricket, and what's going on with Memorial? Because I don't know. They don't seem to have the number of concerts they used to have, and they certainly don't have the quality of big names that they used to have. So that's not anything that deals with CMIP, but it begs the question, if we're going to spend two, at some point, 2.3 million or be a part of that, I don't like the deal we got right now. And maybe it's because I don't really understand what the deal is. So could you find time with the mayor sometime during this next three or four months to let us know what the story is?
We will do that. And, yeah, there will be no money spent in this regard unless we have a full project plan that comes through and shows how it is.
Commissioner Townsend?
Thank you. While we're on page three, this is more of a question, but I wanted to bring it up. It was something I had mentioned briefly during our strategic planning session. I've been approached, and I don't know if Commissioner Bynum has yet and Commissioner Johnson, but I understand the intention is to also talk with them, by a developer who wants to do a Peregrine Tree Mount master plan to encourage economic development and growth in that corridor. I think at least one or both of those were TIFs at one time. They apparently had talked at some time in the last year with some members of our economic development staff. And as I look at page three in the community projects, would this be the right approach to getting funding for something like that project? I have no idea what the cost would be, but I'd like to put that on the table so that we can do something with regard to trying to develop that corridor that certainly needs revitalization.
As far as a planning plan for an area, probably wouldn't go here under debt, would it, Debbie? I know we put some of those in place where we have those ones for the planning department. They've got a few updated project areas.
Just for a study?
Yeah.
Yes.
We might, we have some of that under, that might fall under the operating.
Yeah. So it falls more in that operating area. I'm not familiar with, you know, what their ideas are, thoughts, timelines, you know, where they're coming from that. But if that's an initiative that you all want us to work toward, then-
When you say operating area, what do you mean?
That would be the professional services line item, right.
Yeah. So they're not on these capital projects like this?
Okay.
Okay.
But, I mean, if it's one, it's one we need to know about. I mean, if that's something you want to push for and work for.
Well, yes, but maybe it doesn't belong with this grouping, so as we go toward-
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, and I'll say this, Commissioner, I don't expect, you may have an idea about something, and it belongs to a different area. You don't have to bring it up at that exact moment. If you throw it out there so we understand it, you know, I mean, I've worked these how many years, and I don't remember which exact category everything goes through. We do a pretty sizable budget, so.
Well, I can come back with some more detail, but when I saw what was on page three, that spurred that. So I'll come back with some more detail. Thank you.
All right. So as we wrap up the CMIP, we can, if there are more questions or comments or detail that you want to work with this, we can do that. We want this in the hands of the commissioners. Historically, we've done this. I mean, this is a nice spacing before the budget, because there are two components to it. One is the total amount that we're going to dedicate towards it. And of course, if the final revenue numbers come in in June, and we just have so much money we don't know what to do with, there may be some adds on these. That's never happened yet. I'm just saying that optimistically. One day, we're going to have a revenue projection so great that we're going to add projects. But this gives you an idea of where the staff is moving. Want to make sure the commission has this in front of us. And really, from a policy perspective, we're looking at the overall debt service. We're looking at the cash expenditures and the overall debt. We're looking at the, where we've been in the past on our infrastructure spending, and making sure that we're, if there's a particular project-
particular project that we're tracking, that it's on track in the budgeting cycle. So, that's kind of the check and balance that we're providing to this process. But this will, I mean, I know Doug and his staff are going to continue to work these. This is not a finished product, but as things move, and as you also know, if a federal grant comes available for something, we'll go after it. If there's a, if a new street breaks, has a storm collapse because of too much rain, then we'll shift things around and go after it. Surely that won't happen. Mr. Heatherman, can we have a guarantee?
Well, Mayor, it did happen. Last week, and we're getting that covered right now.
Thank you. So, those, obviously, it's a moving target, but we have projects that are planned moving forward. The departments have had an opportunity to, and the staff, to say what they think are the biggest priorities. That priority list has been brought to us, and with the conversation we've had to move some priorities in terms of things that we want to see happen, we get our input on this. So, as we move forward to the budget, the CMIP, projects, cash, debt, will all be, and equipment, will all be brought as part of the larger budget package, with this as the major structure for how it will be spent. So, all right, any further questions on this? I think we can wrap this CMIP component up. If you do have projects that you want to discuss, be sure to let me know, let Doug know, we'll get it back on the calendar, and we will discuss it in terms of what your interests are. We do have now a second section on CDBG, and we'll turn this over to Joe Connor to present that. Commissioner Markley?
So, including tonight, this is our second meeting as the committee as a whole. We have met six times, however, as a CDBG committee, and we have at least one more meeting scheduled. We started meeting in January, and what makes this more complicated than previous years is that we are at the beginning of our five-year plan. So, this year is the first year of a new five-year plan for CDBG, and we have struggled to find out details about what we are legally able to do with those dollars. So, we want to be innovative, we want to use our money for the greatest impact, and it seems like that would be easy to do, but it hasn't been. So, what I'm really reporting to you tonight is that we're not done. We were hoping tonight we could present to you a draft budget. We are not to that point yet, because we still have some legal questions that are being answered as to how those funds can be spent. So, our next meeting is Tuesday, January 9th, at 4:30 here on the fifth floor. You are all more than welcome to join us for this, June 9th, yes, sorry, what did I say?
Tomorrow.
Yeah, it's tomorrow. Yes, it's tomorrow. Yeah, yeah, we have to be done. We have to be done by the 15th? Yes, Melissa's not in, we must be done by the 15th. So, we've been meeting basically weekly for the past three or so weeks, and if we don't get done tomorrow night, we will have to meet again before the 15th, because we have to have a draft done by the 15th for publication requirements. So, if you want to come, you're welcome to come and hear more details about what we're struggling with tomorrow, and if not, we hope to report back to you promptly before the 15th with a draft budget for you guys to take a look at what we're publishing. Now, that doesn't mean, once we publish it, it doesn't mean we can't make changes, but we just have to have something to present to the public via publication at that point.
Can you give us a 30,000-foot view of the discussion that you're having? Because I know there was an interest of changing the paradigm a little bit about what we're doing.
Yeah, so, so over the years since I've been here, both the full commission and this committee have had discussions about how can we be more impactful with how our dollars are spent. So, you know, what we've been trying to talk about is how can we use the money that we have and sort of set up a program that people can use? And as an example, we've talked about this idea of the land bank program. Can we put the money out there and say, "If you can identify a property you want in the right kind of neighborhood, the kind that meets the CDBG requirements, and you have a house you want to rehab, we can take it through this land bank process, you can get the house, and you can use the CDBG money to rehab the house." And we thought that would be easier for staff to administer if they knew what the program set was, what are we looking at doing, and hopefully cut down on some administration costs, and also just allow us to have greater impact in a neighborhood, hopefully doing more than one or two houses in a neighborhood as we have in the past. So, not necessarily even that program, but just the idea of having a pot of money that's dedicated toward a specific purpose, rather than just sort of letting it hang out there until we get applications in February and then saying, "Oh, yeah, maybe we'll do this one, maybe we'll do that one." We're just looking to be more thoughtful in advance as to how we spend those funds. Again, that all sounds lovely, but then as we start to ask questions about what can you do and what can't you do, and how would this work and how would that work, it's just become extremely complicated, and so, in a way, it helps us realize why we've just been sort of throwing the money here and there all these years, because that, we could do that more easily than we could. Being thoughtful is hard, is what we're finding. So, we're still dedicated to the idea of being thoughtful, I think, although we are getting weary. We're in the home stretch. We're still trying to figure out how that thoughtfulness is going to work, but just every, the more, I just told Commissioner McKeonin before this meeting, the more questions we ask, the stupider I feel, because we just keep running up against more and more issues and trying to find the best way to spend these dollars.
Well, and I think it comes to Bill Heatherman's point, that federal money is the hardest money to spend. The strings attached are the most complicated, the most layered, and blending it with other funding sources is very hard. So, isolating public works projects based on federal dollars and not intermingling them with others is what he's come to in public works, and is not dissimilar to this. I know that our staff, just for example, because the majority of our staff for CD, all of our staff for CDBG are paid for by CDBG, and there's an allowance percentage of CDBG money that can be used, that includes home dollars and the other monies that we administer. But they have to fill out a timesheet on 15-minute increments in terms of how they're using their pay, that's really cumbersome, and I think, so we get money from the government, federal government, which is great. It's difficult to use, because it has so many layers of restrictions on it, and it's even more difficult to use as an investment for further growth. And so, that's, I guess, where the challenge is. And I guess the philosophical piece that we'll need to wrestle with is what percentage of that money do we spend doing minor home repairs and other things, and what percentage do we reserve for economic, what would be more termed economic development projects? Is that right? And how we balance those? And are there other, are there other categories that you're discussing in terms of the philosophical piece? I mean, there's kind of the social services piece versus the economic development piece, how to leverage those?
I think our goal is to have fewer pieces rather than more, because the more pieces we have, the more paper staff has to fill out. So, in terms of trying to limit the administration, we're trying to make fewer categories rather than more categories.
Yep. All right, so, no easy task.
I just, could I ask a question? You've been working on it quite some time, and I can remember, I'm probably talking 10 years ago or more, when the CDBG budget was probably more than double what it is now. Have you been able, did you start your work by saying, "What are we doing now," so that you've got a comparison to go by? And when you bring the budget piece that you've been working on, will you start us with that? Thanks.
Yes. Yeah, so, the budget you'll see, it'll look similar to what we've been seeing. It'll have, and we can do more than one prior year, but we really just look at the prior year, and then the column next to it is the current year, or the revised budget, and then 2016, so we can kind of see where the dollars went the year before. We did just get a packet that includes years going back a little further, I think. Yeah, so, because we requested that as part of our review tomorrow, but yeah, you'll see, at the very least, you'll see one year prior, and then you'll see the updated proposal.
Okay. But Commissioner Bynum, and I don't want to belabor this, but are you looking for more like where we've made the most substantial investment with this money over a decade? Are you looking for just what we generally did last year to give you an idea?
I think I'd be interested in more than one year's worth of comparison for starters, but also, if we're going for impact, I'd kind of like to know where we've been. So, what have we done, and did we or did we not find it impactful?
How do we, I mean, I think it'd be easy for us to do a five-year trend.
Well, that's what I'm not, I mean, I'm not trying to ask for more work from a group that's been working for quite some time, but maybe that data is available.
This money is readily, I mean, this information's readily available in terms of-
That would be phenomenously illustrative, so we will have that.
Thanks.
Yeah, I think we can easily go back five, even 10 years. It's just budget numbers we just have to pull out. How we budgeted CDBG money for the last 10 years, that'd be an easy chart.
Well, go ahead.
Easy chart, but not necessarily easy to read. There's a difference.
I don't disagree with that. I think, but I think that's part of the layers of CDBG, but I think it would be easy to say, "We've put this much in demolition for this many years. We've put this much in home repairs for this many years. We've put this much in staff salaries over this many years." I mean, there's some basic categories that could be cleaned up for simplicity. I mean, I think that's an easy deliverable, just in terms of how we spend our money. "We've put this much in bond financing for the hotel," right, "over this many years." I mean, that's, that's information that I think can just be lined out, and it totals up to the bottom of what our allocation is, how much we received, how much we've allocated for homelessness, how much we've allocated for home funds. I mean, those, those numbers are, that should not be a hard spreadsheet to put together.
I'm believing in you. Okay.
Anyway, I've, I used to be on the CDBG committee. I'm glad that you guys are doing this. I was on the CDBG committee for four years.
You're missed, you can join us.
No, I know, if I had some nostalgia, I'll come over, but otherwise, I'm just pleased with it, with your work.
Great, great.
All right. Any other questions about CDBG, CMIP? I will say, it took me about a year and a half so I could sort out CMIP and CDBG, and to say CDBG in the correct order. Usually, it's CBGG, is how I said it for a couple of years. So, anyway, it all comes with time. Seeing no other questions, we are adjourned for tonight. Thank you all.